Nineteenth, two thousand nineteen school board meeting. I'd like to begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have any revisions this evening?
We do not.
Summary of non-public actions from July sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Myers made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Mrs. McDonald's second, motion carried five zero zero. Mr. Myers made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of June twentieth, two thousand nineteen. Mrs. McDonald's second, motion carried four zero one. Mrs. Hersberger, upstanding. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the staff nomination. Clarification is presented. Mrs. Hersberger's second, motion carried five zero zero. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the nomination of Kathleen Oakes as a CHS special education teacher at a salary of sixty-five thousand one hundred fourteen for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Mrs. Hersberger's second, motion carried five zero zero. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the nomination of Brittany Milligan as CHS music teacher at a salary of forty-six thousand seven hundred sixty-one for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Mrs. Harrison's second, motion carried five zero zero. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the nomination of Cara Robinson as a CHS English teacher at a salary of forty-three thousand five hundred and thirteen for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Mrs. Harrison's second, motion carried five zero zero. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the nomination of Gary Benega as a CHS English teacher at a salary of fifty-three thousand seventy-two dollars for the school calendar year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Mrs. Hersberger's second, motion carried five zero zero. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the resignation of Heidi Paris, CHS social studies teacher. Mrs. McDonald's second, motion carried five zero zero. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the nomination, I'm sorry resignation of Sarah Ansey, LMS science teacher. Mrs. Hersberger's second, motion carried five zero zero. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the resignation of Jennifer Watson, CHS Spanish teacher. Mrs. Hersberger's second, motion carried five zero zero. And Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the resignation of Jared Mills, CHS athletic director. Mrs. McDonald's second, motion carried five zero zero. I don't believe we have any presentations this evening.
That is correct.
And do we have any correspondence?
We did not.
We go to superintendent's comments.
So I'm going to start with an update on our kindergarten enrollment numbers. And based on Principal Thompson, let us know that right now the number is at seventy-one. So there are seventy-one students expected to show up on opening day. There is one additional student who is moving in from out of state to a house that is just being finished up in town. And so the anticipated start date for that student is October first. So we will have seventy-two students on October first.
Seventy-two last time, is that including?
He was including the student coming in October. Yep. So seventy-two known students who are, who are coming.
So that's eighteen per class.
That is an even eighteen per class. And then again, if you look at the numbers from last year, you'll see that, you know, we could expect a few more to enroll. And then later on tonight, I'm going to talk with the board. We have a request from a family that is looking to relocate and would be interested in paying tuition to attend. And so we'll get into the details on that case. But that would be a seventy-third kindergartner that we would know of if, if the board accepts that tuition arrangement. With the likelihood that the family would be arriving anyway, moving into town. So, so that would be something that I think is probably best covered in non-public so that we can discuss details of the child situation and not, not do that in public session. So. So that's where we are with the kindergarten update. At this point, Principal Thompson's strong recommendation is to the board is to stay the course. Because with four teachers, because the disruption on the building at this point would be just pretty intense.
How many kids were registered this time last year?
I have to go back to the chart. We have that, we have that number.
I'm just curious because that was his recommendation last year and it backfired horribly. That we had sixteen kids in third grade and we have twenty-three in kindergarten. That is unacceptable.
So his recommendation, though, even last summer, he was sounding the alarm bell. The problem was we hadn't budgeted for the fifth, right? So that was the, that was the position that we had to find in other lines of the budget in order to make that happen. So this year is a different scenario. We planned on, we budgeted for a fifth in case we needed it. And he's been pretty, pretty careful watching those numbers and saying it doesn't look like it's something we're going to hit. And if you look at the history of it. So it does, he was last year saying to me, we've got a lot of kindergartners enrolled, way more than we expected. What are we going to do? And I kept saying, well, we didn't budget for the position. So that's why we ended up approving a position the day before school.
Let's say there are seventy-seven on August thirty-first. Could I call an emergency meeting? Or to who? Can I call you to call an emergency meeting?
Well, I think you, you certainly, you could ask the chair if that's something that we wanted to do.
I'm just.
I know, I hear what you're saying, but it's like any other class. You just never know what can happen. You know, like, we're just talking to Tom and at LMS right now, he's starting to get kids come rolling in right now. You know, they weren't expected. They're up like, like ten kids.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sorry.
Are they in fifth grade, sixth grade?
Sixth and seventh.
Good.
You know, classes, classes are small right now, so we kind of like levels them off.
Good.
I think the other, the other answer I would give is that even if we hit eighty, we would be at last year's cap. I know we lowered the cap to eighteen because that's the ideal scenario. But we still are within the realm of, you know, last year when we were getting up to twenty-three, we're then over the cap that we now recognize may have been a little bit high. So, you know, it, there's no exact science to doing this, but.
We're not psychic.
Right.
And I mean, the fact that we got so many kids over the course of the year, they really can't tell, you know, you, you, we have no idea who's going to move to town in.
Or move out.
Or move out in April, May, June. So, I don't know. I, I, I feel, I feel comfortable that we're below our lower number at this point.
How many kids are in each first grade class?
Twenty-one? No, I think, I think it's like eighteen now.
See, I think that's wrong on so many different levels.
Why?
Because first graders are independent.
No, they're not.
I taught first grade, I taught second grade. Kindergartners are so needy. That's when we have them. The number should be low. Most districts that have kindergarten, they're sixteen's their number.
Michelle, we had that number written down on the agenda. I didn't bring.
I don't know what.
First grade number was ninety.
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three in first grade.
Okay, so they have five teachers.
With five teachers, that's correct. So it's under, well, it's under twenty, right? So a hundred would be twenty per class. So you're at ninety-three, so you're at nineteen.
I just think first, second grade could go up to twenty, twenty-one. I had twenty-three kids in my first grade class and I differentiated first, second, and third grade instruction by myself at a classroom. I just, kindergartners are just so needy.
And that's why we have a full-time parent.
Yep.
Yeah.
I feel more comfortable than I did last year because we're below our lower threshold number. Like, we're not, I don't see us getting to twenty-two, twenty-three kids again, you know, if.
And if we do, it's going to be through the course of the year and there's really nothing we can do about it at that point. Nor can we anticipate that and say, well, you know, we're going to be there like by December.
We just don't know.
I just don't think, I don't know. I was looking at pictures of my kids through the years for a second and there were twenty-three, twenty-four kids in classes. I, I don't know. I think there should be twenty-three kids in third grade and fourth grade. I, that's just my personal belief that they need to learn to.
In what grade?
Third and fourth.
Fourth grade there is.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
I didn't know if we were in the fog out in the public or not, so.
It's very humid.
Grade, grade four, we're looking at twenty-three and grades one through three is twenty-point-eight, so twenty-one.
What is it in sixth grade?
Six, seven, eight, twenty-five.
Really? I thought there was one class with like eighteen or seventeen. Is that seventh grade?
Probably, smallest class.
But they've gone up.
They've gone up, but they're also just four classes. Remember sixth grade and now they moved up.
I'm just on the record, I'm on the record.
You are.
Can we just get the information to the board as soon as possible so it'll ease Liz a little bit where we were at this point last year?
Yes, we'll get that number.
Yep. I'm sure Scott has that number readily available because he was tracking it quite closely last year.
So next up is the college attendance by CHS graduates. So if you click the link on the report that's in the document, and I'll summarize this so the public knows. This year we had a hundred and fourteen students who graduated from Campbell High School. There were additional students who graduated from other programs. Twenty-two of those students are enrolled in a two-year school and seventy-four are going to a four-year school. So it's a total of ninety-six students. And that comes out to eighty-four point two percent that are going on to a two or four-year school. And if you look at history on this, that number is right where it's been. There's, it's not an up or down. It's probably the average of what we've seen over the last four or five years.
What's the state average, do you know?
I can get that.
I'm just curious. I'm just curious. I think that's outstanding. Do they count trade schools as a two-year college? Probably not, right? Like, we're talking community college and stuff.
I think that's community college.
No, I'm just curious.
And the other thing that's reported there is attendance at selective schools. And that number went way up this year. So the class of two thousand nineteen, nearly twenty percent were accepted into a selective school, which is a, a program that's a little bit more picky, I guess, on, on who that they will select. So the criteria is higher. It's usually academically based. And there's a smaller percentage of students who apply that end up getting it. So we didn't list out example schools, but guidance is compiling the reports, so they certainly have a handle on, on what they look at as a selective school. So. So this class actually did pretty well when it comes to the idea of acceptance at selective schools.
Has guidance given any reason as to why that number climbs so high? We're at almost twenty percent and last year we were at seven percent.
Right? And, and if you look over the past few years, it was sort of hovering around that eight percent and then here it is up to the almost twenty. I can ask that question.
Yeah, I was curious. That was a standard definition of what a selective, any school that's selective, is that what that is? Or are, is guidance taking a certain subset of that? You know, like percent acceptance rate and that kind of stuff.
That is what is a selective school. That is the definition of what is a selective school.
Any, any school that is in any manner selective, that doesn't accept everybody.
There's a list of them, like Harvard, Yale, Cornell.
But then there are also others like U and H that are still selective.
If you, if you look at the definition down below on the sheet, you can scroll down. Okay, I want to make sure you saw it because it's at the bottom, but.
That's Wikipedia.
Okay. So I guess, in summary, the class of two thousand nineteen did well. They, they maintained the average that we've expected and we'll get an answer as to what the state number looks like.
I was just curious.
All right. So the next topic is on the reporting schedule. And if the board takes a look at this, I'm going to try to shake things up this year and I'm hoping that this kind of changes the way we go about presenting to the board. So you can see that all our meetings that are scheduled September through June have a letter that appears inside. And so for the first meeting in September, you see the big C. The second meeting has an L, a G and an M. And so they stand for Campbell, Litchfield Middle, Griffin Memorial and Mary.
I like that you get your own.
I get my own.
Because it should have been for the middle school, but it went to Mary instead. So Mary took president.
It should be W for Wonder Woman.
But basically what, what we're proposing is that on the fourth, the high school will be here. I've asked them to bring, to highlight a program, to highlight something they do, to bring a teacher, to bring students, to really explain to the board something that's going on in the school. And to, to spend that, I mean, normally we would dedicate a half hour to forty-five minutes to the three principals. We'll dedicate the same amount of time to the one school. But it's about really showcasing something that's happening there, plus an opportunity to pick a couple of items off of their report and to summarize for the board. And following this cycle, each school is going to be here five times next year to present. And so you're going to hear from, you know, five, I'd like to think there would be five very different programs. You know, maybe at the elementary, it could be each grade level will have an opportunity to come in and share something. But really to give you a sense of what's happening from the teachers and from the students themselves. So. You good with that?
Yeah.
I'm good with it, but I was wondering if from your perspective, are there different timeframes throughout the year that are better for you to come versus?
There may be times when we will have specific things that have to come before the board, in which case I will have to attend that meeting as well. That's, and that's fine.
But we actually paid attention to like the perk schedule. There's other schedules that are aligned with it. It actually was oddly aligned.
Yeah.
And so it kind of fell into place pretty nicely. All right. So that means that your next meeting, you will, I believe Campbell is bringing the guidance department and they will be giving an overview to what they do as counselors and to gear students up for the year. All right. So next up is the CHS booster fundraiser. So this is a leftover item from last time. And I don't know if the board, the board did not vote to approve the activities. And so we just wanted to bring it back and get a sense of whether there were additional questions or do we give a green light to the booster club?
I think the only, the only questions we, well, that were left were the dates and they didn't have those and it sounds like they still don't have it this time. So.
Well, I would assume they want to get the board approval before they book something.
Yeah.
You know, you could approve the concepts and then just ask that when each date is selected, that that, just come back to the board.
Yeah.
I had a question about the, I think the comedy night and the hypnotist, if it's going to be held at Talent Hall. I think they mentioned that potentially. Is this a parent audience and liquor, is liquor going to be served?
No, they said, they said it's going to be younger. It was for children. It was peaking. It has to be, and they'd have a hypnotist at the high school. I don't know why they'd have to have it at Talent Hall.
Well, again, they didn't specify where the location would be on any of these.
It'd be way more funny, the auditorium. It would be.
That's possible. That question was asked as far as the age and it was going to be geared towards children.
Late spring. I'll make a motion then to approve the fundraiser ideas, concepts for the CHS booster club. The Fun Flicks, the car show and the hypnotist.
A second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all is the favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Opening day schedule. So if you click that link, it should, it takes you to the first day agenda. So this has gone out to all the teachers. And a little bit different this year, we're actually having the first day back for everybody as a district day. So we're closing Griffin and closing the middle school because all staff will be at, at the high school. So I asked principals to post signs clearly, letting people know if they needed something to either come back the next day or they could come to Campbell. And our, our events for that day, we're going to start at seven o'clock in the cafeteria. So we have a new badge system that's going in, so we have to replace all our badges. So everybody will have a photograph from a professional photographer and then badges will be issued.
Does that mean us too? I want to, I request a new picture, not against the board, by Barbara. I look like, it looks like a mug shot, every single one. No, way worse.
And so it is a professional photographer that will be taking the pictures. So the, I can't even think of the school photographer's name, but they, they will set up multiple cameras in there. And they, they'll be taking the photos for us. So.
Do we get to select that background?
I want the laser background.
Can't have the laser background.
Sorry.
I think the school board should have the laser background.
So you are welcome to come and get your badge picture done there. And if not, it might be with Barbara later, sorry. So.
That would be interesting, you know, if they did like each school a different color background.
So actually, we've been doing that and that's created part of the problem. So we're now going, yeah, so let me explain. Every time somebody moves from school to school, we have to issue a new ID badge and then re-key everything. So. So what we're going to do now is going to be a district ID and it'll all be one color scheme. But then you can just change the code to that key and say, okay, access this building and not that building when somebody moves. So.
It's going to have a logo on it?
It will have the logo. Yep. Then we will, around seven forty-five, head into the auditorium and that'll be our welcome and recognition. So that's a great event. We honor all our teachers that are back for, you know, five, ten, fifteen, twenty. I think last year we were up to forty-five years, if I remember correctly. So.
That was off, no, I would say the year before.
So feel free to join us for that. It's, it's a nice event. I'll have some opening comments for the, for the staff. And then we have a break. Immediately after that, Justice Broderick is joining us. He is the co-chair of the, of the Campaign to Change Direction New Hampshire. And we also will have our district school psychologists who are going to present on the heels of Justice Broderick. So that two-hour session that you see covered there is the required suicide prevention training that is asked of school districts. So we're getting that done with the whole staff right at the beginning. Guest speaker, if you haven't seen Justice Broderick, he's very dynamic and very engaging.
He came in the spring in my school. It was, it was mind-boggling. We, yeah, it was tough to hear.
For staff or for students?
Students. Yeah, it was, yeah, it's, it can happen to anybody, anybody.
And then we will have our, actually they'll have meetings for the two associations while we prep for the barbecue. So we'll have a nice barbecue lunch for everyone, followed by technology time. So the data governance and student privacy policy, we're going to do with everybody at once because then we all get the same message. And Jason, Brendan and Andrea are going to do that presentation. And then at two o'clock, the last hour is for Alice certification. So remember that we're now going live with Alice Drills. We've had our parent information night. We're going to get more info out on that. And our staff do have to be recertified each year. So new staff will have to become certified and everybody else will have to retake the test. So that will wrap up the day. The board is welcome for any and all. I think the key highlights are getting your badge and being at the recognition ceremony, but you're welcome at other events in the barbecue.
I have to teach that day. That's my first day at school.
You'll be done in the morning?
I'll have to call Larry and see if I can go.
Yeah, I may be able to come for a little bit in the morning.
All right. We will, I think last year we had seats to the board down in the front over in the side piece. I envisioned setting it up the same way as we did last year. So we'll, we'll have a seat back down there for everybody. All right. So now you have three reports. So the, the first is a district hiring report. And so if you open that document up, you can see that at Griffin, we have hired two paraprofessionals and four teachers at Griffin. So remember, this report covers everybody. So if somebody retired and left, they're included on this so you can get a sense of the whole flow of positions. At the middle school, we have two administrative assistants, one that kind of moved positions and then the other came in to replace the one that shifted. Then you've got four paraprofessionals and five teachers that are listed on there. And some of the teachers you have not seen the nominations for yet, but that's why the backpack is here. We have a lot of work to do in non-public with teachers. So you may be seeing some names there that you haven't seen yet. And then at Campbell High School, the list is longer. So we have a new athletic director. We then have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five paraprofessionals. Am I counting eleven new teachers?
Social worker.
With the social worker. Yep. So there is a leave for a social studies teacher and the, the sub is in long term. We don't know how long that will be. That is, yep. And I can get into details in. So that's the hiring summary. Two other things that the board asked for, and then, but wait, that's not all because we also have open positions. So as much as we've done a ton of hiring, and now I'm going to say this to the public. We, we need paraprofessionals at Griffin Memorial. At the middle school, we're looking for a lunch monitor. We need a boys' basketball coach, a girls' basketball coach, a cheerleading coach and a food service tech. At Campbell High School, we are looking for a part-time PE teacher, an administrative assistant in athletics, a JV girls' soccer coach, a boys' JV soccer coach, a JV boys' basketball coach, a school psychologist and a paraprofessional. And then district-wide, actually we filled that, so we don't have that district-wide slot. So if anybody knows of folks that are interested in working for the school, there are definite openings that we need to get filled. And then the last thing is a cost overview and I think it's important to let people know that, you know, if somebody goes out at one spot on the salary schedule, you bring somebody in, there's costs that shift that occur. So looking at salaries alone, in, between our administrative assistants and grounds folks, we have saved over sixteen thousand dollars with folks that we have brought in. For paraprofessionals, we have savings projected of over seven thousand dollars. For teachers, we have savings projected of over forty-one thousand dollars. And all of those savings are based on salaries and salaries only. When you get into health insurance, we have folks that haven't even selected a health plan yet, so we can't quite project exactly where that's going to fall. So we'll have to get that to you later. And depending on health plans that people take, you could gobble up the salary savings. I mean, that's the reality of hiring, right? But right now we're looking at going into the year with, with rough savings of sixty-five thousand dollars overall in, in the hiring that we've done. Any questions for me on the positions? I have to, if you've not been in the office to see this, here are Holly and Colleen running around the table with a table full of new people, filling out paperwork. And they are just cranking people through it as quickly and as efficiently as they can. And then after they've collected that pile of paperwork, they get the joy of entering it all into the various systems to make it work. It's really quite a process to see. So, and they're, they're very efficient the way they go at it.
Mike, is the social worker a new position?
The social worker is the grant-funded position. And I'll talk more about that because the school, the open school psychologist position at the high school, we have been unable to get anybody to even apply for that. And we have looked at outside contract providers for it and nobody has anybody available to do it. So at this point in time, we think that we're, we could potentially go the year without somebody in the school psychologist role. So it may be need to have somebody with, not that certification, but somebody with a mental health background even more important because the high school would have nobody.
Would that person be able to do testing?
That would, so on, on the testing, we probably would have to involve our other school sites to help out with the required testing.
Yeah, that's a big chunk of time. The school psychologist does a lot of the special ed testing and retesting for the kids. So that's, yeah.
But when, when we received that kind of late resignation, that really kind of forced me in about what we had to do to get ready to open and make sure that our students have their needs met.
So as of now, social worker's a one-year position?
That's correct. Yep. Any other questions?
So will we still try to recruit that throughout the year or continue to try to recruit?
Oh, no. We're going to continue to try. Yep.
Has there been interest in the mental health, the grant position, the mental health commission? Or is that a separate?
So we hired a person today.
Oh, that's right. You said that.
And so you'll see the rest of the packet on that tonight, but yes. It's a different certification level. So. So the last thing is just to share with the board the, the warrant article that has been posted. So I know you met and voted on this Monday. been posted. So I know you met and voted on this Monday, but I wanted you to see the final version and to let, to give the public an update. So as it stands right now, we presented in court earlier in the month, asking for permission to have a special meeting to ratify a new collective or to vote on and to fund a new collective bargaining agreement. We're still waiting to hear from the judge as to whether the judge is granting our petition to have that special meeting. And my understanding is that the courts have gone electronic now. So as soon as the judge issues a ruling, it gets posted into a, an online portal, our attorney will get an email letting her know that the ruling is there and then she'll alert us. So we'll, we'll know pretty quickly once the judge has the, has the answer posted. But if you remember in court that day, the judge said that they could take up to 30 days to issue it. And we had to post the warrant by yesterday legally in order to stick with our timeline. So we have to proceed as if we have the public meeting being held. And then if the judge rules against us, we'll just stop the process at that point. But we're proceeding as if it's been approved. So here's the warrant that has been posted. And you can see that at the bottom of Article One, which is the collective bargaining agreement, or is no Article Two. So at the bottom of the article is that the board recommends it by a 5-0-0 vote, and the budget committee voted Monday 6-2 to 0 to also recommend it. So those are on the warrant that are posted, and that's what would be on the ballot presented to the, to the public, assuming that we get it approved. And your signatures are on page two of them. And Michelle, it's on our website. And remind us where else it's posted. It's at the.
All three schools.
Any questions on that?
Anyone? Thank you. All right. That'll bring us to community forum. If there's anybody that would like to speak.
Hi, Nina Stott, Ed Brishling. Thank you for giving us the numbers on the teachers and the savings and all of those things. Fine. I think that was a big help because there was a lot of things out there with regards to the SAU numbers and all the different open positions. So I think that was a great help as well as the number of positions open. The one thing that you said regarding teachers' positions opens, with Campbell, you have a part-time PE teacher. And is that, have all the rest of, open teaching positions been filled?
That is correct. Yep.
Okay. And you had one or two at Griffin that you're still looking for?
Not teachers though, right?
No, I think it was just pairs. Okay. So that, that's a whole lot better progress than we had last month. So that was my main concern coming here today was to, you know, double check, stick my toe back in the water and see where we are with regards to, you know, the losing of some valuable, valuable people with our district.
We, we actually took a pretty aggressive stance because there's really a shortage of teachers across the state. So the critical shortage list that the state has put out includes just about every position on it now. So it allows us more flexibility on the way that we can do the hiring. But it also sends a signal that every district is scrambling to hire certified people. And so with that shortage, we wanted to get it after them as soon as we could. And we also kind of marketed all the great things about Litchfield, Campbell in particular, to the people that were coming along. Because I know there were people who selected us over other offers they had. And, and it wasn't salary-wise, it was teaching environment-wise and the small school approach. So we did all the marketing we could to attract the best people that we could in there.
Okay. That was, that was a huge concern of mine and others. I just wanted to voice my opinion on that. Shoot, I just lost my train of thought.
Can I just add also that the teachers that we did hire, for the most part, I mean, a lot of them were tenure teachers in other schools. I mean, they have a lot of experience behind them, a lot of years of experience behind them. So there weren't that many new teachers that we hired. That's, that's accurate, I think.
And I think, Rob, you brought up the jump in the percentage of selective schools. I know that when Gabby put her numbers in for where she got selected to go to college, you know, they asked where she got accepted. That might have changed as opposed to where you're going. Because I know for a fact she was, you know, accepted at maybe some more selective schools, but it didn't fit where she wanted to go. So you might want to check if that was a skew on the numbers. Because you said you were at 7% to 20%. And, you know, there, there could have been a skew that now they're recording where you were accepted, not necessarily where you went.
Mike, how many teachers gave their notice from the last meeting to now? Because obviously that affects how quickly we can recruit. If they tell us, you know, the middle of the summer, it's a lot harder to fill them. I mean, obviously, there's the school psychologist, but were there others after July?
So there's the high school school psychologist, the, an English teacher at the high school, the part-time PE person at the high school, and then middle school PE. So those are the four that have come in since you last voted.
Those were late.
Yep. But, but as soon as we get them, even though we haven't, we haven't accepted them yet, we start hiring. And so tonight, you know, the middle school PE person, we've got, we've got the candidate lined up already. High school English, we've got a candidate lined up. So actually, when we were hiring, because we were anticipating it, we had three, we had two positions and we had three finalists. And I met with the third person. I said, if I had a position, this is what the salary would be, this is how it would be structured, you know, et cetera. And I said, but the problem is, we don't have a resignation right now. But I want you ready to go. Because when I call you, I want you ready to say yes that day, if you can be.
That's why we can post things as, things as anticipated.
Much more proactive than I've seen in previous years.
And I heard from that person who said, I've got an offer somewhere else. You know, where are you? And I said, give me a day. Because it was literally, we were right on the cusp. And I, the next day I called back and I said, I've got a resignation letter. So what do you think? And she said, well, you're my first choice. That's why I called you. I know, I would go somewhere else if I, I need a job, right? So I'm gonna go somewhere else. But if I can come to Campbell, that's what I want.
That's really encouraging.
I think you were really proactive.
I was really nervous about prospective teachers looking at that. And I'm like, wow, geez, do I want to work in the district that doesn't have a.
I think the plus is it's holding, it's, it's tough to fail a contract, but it doesn't impact a first-year teacher until it's like a year or so.
Right. Not losing any students.
And who's the new athletic director?
So his name is Josh, Josh Knight. And he's coming to us from, from Brooklyn. I was gonna say the Bronx. No, the Bronx.
I charter school in the Bronx. Yeah.
He's a lacrosse background. He graduated from Syracuse.
Yeah, he was a player. Division one champ for two years.
He was a member of the NCAA lacrosse championship team at Syracuse twice. There was an article in the Union Leader that Tara posted. I posted on the Campbell's Booster page.
Yeah, I couldn't open it.
On him?
On him. Yeah, I sent it to all of you. The Union Leader did it. Just type his name. That's how I found it, actually.
He's having a meeting right now.
I know. That's why a lot of parents are here.
Yeah.
So, just, just for a side note.
I wish I was there.
I know.
Hey.
Sorry.
Is there anyone else for public input?
Just before it gets away, so credit to the principals, because that's how aggressive they've been about hiring too. I mean, when, when Bill's interviewing candidates, he said, I've got three that are all, if you ask me to rank them, they're all number one. So can, can you see all three and let's just line one up in case? And I was like, absolutely. I mean, it's a smart investment of our time to be ready to go.
Did I text you going, this one's leaving? Because when you see anticipated, it sets off all sorts of alarms in the community because you don't know. But that's something we didn't do previous to this year. We waited to the last minute.
Till we got the resignation in.
Yeah.
All right. Can I just go back to something Nancy said? I'd almost say, Mike, you might want to tell guidance, I think it's as important, it says attended selective schools. I think it's as important to put as accepted. You know, now that you mentioned, if that's what you're saying, I might have missed it and I was thinking.
Because that's as. Accepted to somebody that you couldn't afford.
Yeah. I, I think that report is actually where they're going though. I could be wrong.
But I was just saying, it might be as beneficial to have accepted to selective schools.
You should have all that data, right?
Absolutely. As a parent, they're supposed to bring their acceptance letters in. So they can check the boxes. You applied to seven schools, you got accepted to seven schools. And then they can double check. I think that that's really important.
That's good data. Yeah.
Sorry for missing.
You got it, Rob. You know exactly.
Took me a while. Bill's turn. Again, is there anyone else for public input? Bring us the school board comments. Anything?
I'm just tired.
Yeah. I guess I'd just say thanks to Mike for, I mean, it's been a tough, tough spring and seems like trained in for us to track, you know, rolling with and keeping going. It's not just hiring part either. It's also the whole thing with the election. So the public meeting minutes from July 16th to 9th, 2019 that need approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July 16th.
Other discussion?
If I could just clarify for the board, I don't know if the, I, I think the minutes are probably accurate, but I think they're, they're open to interpretation. So I just wanted to make sure I point out the right section. If you look at page four of eight and about midway down, Robin Kobozinski had asked the board about a Rob, about a tuition waiver request. If you remember, there were a group of parents who were asking about, actually, another child who was not present nor was the parent present. And so they asked about how that request could get back on the agenda. And, and Mr. Burke had indicated that a board member would have to make a motion, which is an accurate response to how it could get on. And then I clarified that the parent would actually need to make the request to the board. And it goes on to say that I indicated that one of the things the board needs to do is have a conversation with the parent, but she's not here making the request at that time. And that got read as the board needs to have a conversation. Like that was via the minutes to reach out to the parent. And that's really not the way I intended. I was just saying that the appropriate way to do it is for the parent to make that request. Right? So I just, I think it's important that we realize that it was for the parent to come in, not for the board reaching out via the minutes. Right? And then there's another section that. There's another part where, and this was attributed to Mrs. Harrison, that the board's done research and the perception that we lost paperwork in minutes is a, is a misnomer. We're unable to talk about the conversation in fact due to privacy laws and collective bargaining, but we just want to disclose, we, we would like to disclose the information if we could. Right? So, and so it's, again, it's just a tough situation all around that we can't, some of the documents are private documents, so we can't disclose those. So I just think, I'm not sure misnomer is the right word for it.
Yeah.
But the, the fact is, we can't get into the details of it, I guess. So. And again, I don't, I don't know that we have to do anything to miss. They can be approved as they are, but.
You want to change the word misnomer?
We could.
That's what you stated. That's the minutes.
Yeah. That is what I said.
We just gave clarification.
Yep.
All right. So we had a motion. Do we have a second? All right. Further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain. 5-0-0. That'll bring us to budget transfers.
So you have a list of budget transfers to take a look at. I'd be happy to take questions and do my best to answer.
You already answered my question before, but I'll ask it in public. I was questioning the dollar amounts on the phone and data.
That's what I.
So in, in the past, we had various line items in the budget. I think if you look at it, there are four $10,000 amounts, because the phone system was sort of four different systems. And now, because it's all database and it's all linked through the internet, it's really one bill. So when you make a phone call, you're no longer tapping into a copper line out of a building. You're, you're going over the internet. So what Jason's doing is consolidating those into one line because you, you're not gonna have the different bills any longer. So, so you see three, or I'm sorry, four $10,000 amounts that then consolidate into a $40,000 line.
So that's just cleaning up basically the whole year.
Yep. And just now. And actually, this is for the year coming up, right? This is for the current budget. So, so going forward, we had budgeted the way we always have, but now with the new system, you can't really pay it out of various lines because you can't differentiate where it came from.
Is this for all the schools? Like, I don't, I know Smart Music's probably for the high school.
So the sheet does represent all the schools. I think there's a way to tell which.
There is. Chair is for the vestibule, I think, or for the ticket. The first four numbers, the account number, the first four numbers. So 1-0-1-1, that's GMS. 2-1 is LMS. 3-1 is CHS. 9-0 is SAU.
I'll make a motion to accept the budget transfers. Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain. 5-0-0. All right. That will bring us to reports, curriculum.
Okay. I just wanted to come tonight, one, with a, we did reach out to the entire grading and reporting committee to make the change to the work-study practices wording that we had talked about in May, I believe, May or June. And it was approved through that committee. So the, you have the updated rubrics for all three buildings. And we've changed that wording to submits work on time, meeting all deadlines and requirements. And that has been approved by the, by the committee. So I am hoping that the board will vote to accept those work-study practices.
Can you get big posters and put these in the school?
Sure.
You know, I just think it would be nice to see a visual of what these work practices are.
I think that's a great idea.
Maybe just put them in the classroom.
You could do that, too.
Mary, you gonna?
I hate to keep going back. Are you gonna stress for the work not to have on rubrics, submitted on time, and if it's on here? Just so that, I, I still have problems with that double dip. You're hitting, hit on this and hit on something else.
As we work to develop the academic rubrics, I mean, this is gonna take some training for us. Because I know that although we've had them in place, there hasn't been such a detailed rubric and descriptors. So it's gonna take some training on our part to get the teachers to, to fully understand this, the importance of that separated out piece. And as we get through the curriculum revisions with all the different subject areas and we start building the competency rubrics for those, it will become clearer and clearer.
Has there been discussion on giving these work-study practices more teeth?
We've had discussion about it. In, in, it's still an ongoing discussion. As we've, I'm gonna talk about in a little bit, the, as we've gone through the, the design studio and all that, all of these things came up as part of our follow-up discussion on how do we actually do that? Do we put it on transcripts? Do we, do we start withholding credit? Like, I mean, there's all kinds of, of conversations.
Yeah.
And every, every district does it differently, unfortunately. So it's, it's hard to say, oh, that's, you know, that's the model that, that everybody's using and we're gonna go with that.
Because we're going from four to five this year, work-study practices. We're gonna have one through five.
Yeah.
Which is zero. You don't do anything.
So, so that was.
And I'm sure it'll be, it'll be different at each school, too, each building, you know, the consequences for.
Right, right. I mean, keeping it at, at GMS, not having it on the, a transcript doesn't impact it. So it is gonna be slightly different at each level. So through the, some of the committees that we've been working through this summer, as well as the grading and reporting committee, that is something that we will continue to be discussing and trying to figure out how to make that have more teeth. Because we recognize how important those skills are for our kids. They need to, they need to be able to, to persevere and problem solve and communicate. I, I think even more so sometimes than some of the, the content specific.
I love how it all ties together with the school core values. I think it's awesome.
That was, that was a huge piece.
When we started this process back in September, the one thing that.
the one thing that, that was, came across loud and clear was that it didn't. We had a rubric, but it didn't have a tie-in or personal meaning to the teachers. So. It was just sort of checking a box was, was what the feedback I got from a lot of the staff. So, you know, really just defining what it means to be at each level, but also making it more relatable to not only the staff, but the students. I mean, that going off of the core values or the PBIS, the best, the pause, that gives it a lot more meaning to the kids, too. So any questions on that?
Do we approve or? Looking for motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the work-study practices.
One second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Five zero zero.
Okay. Curriculum updates and PDA kind of just put this all together in my notes, so I'm going to go through all of it. So we still have the high school documents that need to come before the board. And we've done some work to get them finalized this summer. But in going through the process, they have not gone through PERC. When we went through the process with PERC, we went through K eight. So I will, my plan is to bring them to PERC at our September meeting and bring them before the board the beginning of October. Just as a clarification, the competencies that are on the high school documents are the same as, because we created district competencies for math, K twelve. So I would like to be able to move forward with actually using those district, the competencies that have already been approved by the district on the high school.
So they're going to go first grade or kindergarten?
The competency language.
That is unheard of. Consistency in all our schools?
Look at that.
Oh, my God, you're awesome.
Look at that.
Wow. Expectations every year? Nice. That's fantastic.
So.
So you're happy with that?
Very happy.
That is an update on math specific. I will say, and this kind of leads into my PD report. Elementary and middle school, ELA and social studies got a huge jumpstart on their revisions. Those are the two subject areas that we are. It's going to be heavy lift, but we're going to try and move through this year. I can tell you that we have entire grade levels at the middle school specifically that have revised their curriculum during the Live to Learn Academy. Those teachers came in all five days and really knocked out drafts of everything except for the competencies. We did not draft the competencies because that is what I want us to do that in as a K twelve group as opposed to grade-specific groups.
You had a lot of people in and out of the high, you did a lot this summer.
We did.
There was always somebody at the high school.
I, I have to tell you, it was just amazing to me. We had forty-five staff members at the Live to Learn Academy. Half of them doing curriculum work for three, four, five days. We had ELA, middle school, social, elementary and middle school, social studies, ELA and math. Math was in writing performance assessments. ELA and social studies were drafting their, their stage one UBD documents. And middle school, high school, we had, we had our computer science and ICT group get together. They streamlined competencies and really looked to make the, at least, start making that a true progression off of the new standards for computer science. So that was really exciting as well. On the tech part, we had, the feedback that I got on the tech sessions that we ran was everybody has just been singing Jason and Brendan and Andrea's praises all summer. I run into teachers all the time. They're like, that was, that was one of the best things that we've done. And, you know, I have to give a shout out to Teresa Planty, who ran a couple of classroom sessions for staff. Everything that, that we did during that week was very well attended. It was, it was, it blew away my expectations in all honesty.
Did the librarians go to? Because they're, forget it, I'll ask later. The, what's the, what's the word? The library place, what's a comment? The learning commons teachers, they're supposed to be tech integrators, too, aren't they?
And.
And this was all optional, though.
Right. This was all optional. It was done the week after school got out. So, you know, that's a hard, that's sometimes a hard sell. This is something that, that I've done previously in other districts. And we're lucky to have, with, with twice as many staff, we've been lucky to have twenty people show up. So the fact that we had forty-five people, most, I mean, at all levels. We had admin assistants, we had paraprofessionals, we had classroom teachers. And we, I think there were probably, at most, five people that only attended one day. Most people attended either three days or the full week.
It was optional, but did they get PD credit for that?
They got PD credit and they were compensated for it. But that's, that's a
Yeah.
That's huge.
It's a lot of information.
Yeah, absolutely.
And coming back after your last week of school.
Right, right. And I, the feedback is from, from the curriculum point, I mean, the feedback on the tech piece was super positive. But for the curriculum work, which doesn't always get the most positive feedback, because it's, it's, it's a lot of work. It's heavy lifting.
Boring.
They. I take offense. I take offense.
Sorry.
Curriculum geek like.
Come on. The teachers loved the fact that they had a full week. They could just really dig into it and not have to. You know, when we get into the school year and we're trying to do it, it's a couple hours here, a couple hours there, a couple hours here. So they really liked that and, and said, we want to keep doing this. So that, that was awesome feedback. We also had Data Camp that we had going on this summer. A lot of, a lot of things all starting to tie together. But we had Data Camp, we brought in our building admin and teachers from all three buildings. We took three Wednesdays, we looked at our district data processes, protocols, practices. We talked about PLCs and how to come with some common norms and, and data review protocols. Really with the goal to look at the buildings and our district so that we are setting up some practices and protocols that are going to make our work with data more meaningful and impact student learning and instruction. So that was very successful tying into our design studio. So we had twenty-six teachers last week that went to, teachers and admin that attended the one-day design studio up in Concord. It was, it was a great day, a little short, having gone to it the last few years. I think it, for me, it was disappointing that it was only one day because there, there wasn't as much options in terms of sessions. But in, we all came back together on Friday and really did a workday as a district. The feedback was that everybody walked away with something, which was huge. And the discussions that we had on that Friday workday really were just so powerful in terms of what, now, now what? How do we move it forward? How do we, how do we look at this through all the different pieces, through the grading and reporting that we've been doing? From the, the curriculum revision, from the data piece? And how do we bring that all together and, and get it communicated to the board, to the community, to the teachers, to the parents? How do we start to, to really move this whole system of competency-based ad forward as a district? So very exciting. I.
So you figured that all out, then?
I had very high expectations. And at the end of the day, I was a little disappointed that we did not get as far. I mean, I was ready to put a bow on all of it.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
People left going, wow, like that, this is, this is a lot. The, the thing that was very exciting to me was, so this started as the group that we're taking to the design studio. And then I kind of slipped in the fact that, okay, well, you know, we're going to continue to meet and do this work during the course of the year. And I gave the, I said, you know, if this isn't something you want to be involved in, you know, just let me know. No, don't, you don't have to stand up and say, I'm out now. But, you know, shoot me an email, say this, I really can't be part of this. Out of the twenty-six, I have one person reach out and say, I just have too much on my plate right now to, to be part of this. And really, I see that group as, as like the communication. So we'll bring grading and reporting work, we'll bring all the different committee work to that group. I figure if we can meet quarterly even just to kind of pull it all together and then communicate it back out.
So that's admins and teachers from all three schools?
So were there a lot of those teachers that live to learn in the same?
There were.
I want to burn them out, but that's interesting.
But there were a lot that weren't. There were a lot that chose one or the other. So, you know. Yeah, yeah, it was very, very exciting. And the, well, not the last thing. Just a couple of quick notes. We had twelve teach, twelve K and one teachers and tutors. Did a couple, a three-day Wilson training with Chris Davidson, who's our reading specialist at GMS. I talked to her today. She came in after the, it was the end of last week or the beginning of the, I don't, I don't have the dates off the top of my head. But she came in today to talk to me about it, said that it was super positive. Everybody really felt they walked away with things that they could bring back to their classrooms. Just, we had two teachers that did the NGSX science training this summer. We had two other ones that were trained at the end of last year as well. So that gives us a little bit of a foothold in that as we are working with our science instruction. We had teachers attend Project Lead the Way training and AP training. So ton of PD done this summer for our staff. In terms of administration, I know that we had people go to the principals conference, the superintendents conference, and the special ed administrators conference. So even for, for all of us that, that are working year-round, we did a lot of PD ourselves. So. It was a lot done.
I'd say teachers only work ten months at the.
I feel lazy now. Some of us did all of it.
I did some myself.
Actually, if I can jump on Mary's coattails for a second, because unfortunately, we, we just spent two days in retreat, so.
I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah, so the admin team and the directors were all at Southern New Hampshire University on Monday. So last year, we did a one-day retreat, this year a two-day. And we broke it out, so it was sort of all hands on deck for one day. And then yesterday was a CIA day. So it was Mary and the principals, me and Devin. And wow, we, I mean, conversations. First of all, I mean, starting introductions, day one, it was, we don't have to do introductions, we're all back. There are no new faces at the table, which was really kind of an interesting point to make. And then we just launched into the work that we needed to do. So I think it was two pretty productive days.
Absolutely, absolutely. And all of these things that we were working on with teachers and admin during the course of the summer, I think, kind of, you know, we were able to, to look at them through a different lens and tie a lot of it together, so.
What do you do at a retreat? Like, what did, what, what did you do there?
Yeah, so we.
I'm just curious.
So we have a PD coming up in November. So we have an author coming to present a book. So we had assigned people to read the book in advance and we did a book study to prepare how to do that with our teachers. So that when the author comes in November, we're, we're ready. So it was sort of the preliminary work that our team needed to do. We spent time examining practices that we have, you know, and I just kept asking a lot of why questions. Why do we do this? You know, what is it that has us taking this approach? We did some role-playing and skips. Yes, we did. So, no, 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 it was. It was, it, it was practicing the elevator speech. So you get into the elevator, elevator with somebody who says, literally, New Hampshire, where is that? And you've got that thirty seconds to tell them about our awesome little school district.
Tom Looklater won.
How would you do it?
That would be my guess. Tom Looklater. Should be a politician.
It wasn't a competition. Anyway. And so that, so, so the retreat is off-site, Liz, so we're not here, you can't get interrupted by the phone. Believe it or not, the, the room we selected had spotty internet. Email in the middle of it.
Did they suggest all districts send everyone here and you guys all like bond?
Yeah, it was a bonding. You know, we ended last night with a barbecue at Mary's house. And so part of it is you have to play together also. You're going to, you're going to work hard, you're going to disagree with each other at times. And so you, you also have to be able to talk to each other socially. And so, and it wasn't a lot of school talk last night. We were, we, I will tell you this.
Because we're burned out.
I can share, well, no, I can share pictures, but. We all went to Title Boxing Club.
Oh, you do?
And received a boxing lesson from a trainer. And so just picture your principals, Michelle joined us.
I'm not even going to say anything.
We all had the gloves on and I was hitting that bag pretty hard. Because at that point, there were a few things frustrating me, but it was worth, it was worth doing, so.
It was fantastic, although we do think that maybe Devin and I will never be allowed to plan a SAU outing again.
I asked the directors, I said, could we plan an activity that would put people out of their comfort zone and do, and really a bonding activity? And they came up with boxing. I'm like, well, I've never done it, but sure. So there we went. Actually, can I just say, it was awesome. Really awesome.
No, it was, it was fun. It was. There was stuff I couldn't do. Did you go to?
You were there.
I would pay money to see a thing good to the box. I partnered one activity.
Wow.
And, and I'll tell you, don't mess with our coach because she, she was, she was serious. She was very serious, so I did everything she said.
Next to market pass?
Yeah.
There's some ladies in town that go there.
So that's our, that's our, that's what we do for the retreat. And honestly, I would say the team, which is strong going in, is even stronger at the end of this. Because we, we have deeper understanding of each other and, you know, had an opportunity to bond in a way we, we're not going to get to do that during, during the year, of course, so.
That's awesome. I'm a little jealous.
I know.
Hey, we could do, we could do a school board boxing night, just say the word.
So Mary, I had a question.
Yes.
Bring us back, sorry. When you're looking at curriculum, when you're setting the curriculum, do, do you go to the level where you're looking at the number of assignments that are in each quarter and how they're weighted?
Not yet.
Or is that a teacher function?
So that will be, as we go through, the, the UBD process is three stages. So the first stage is what comes before the board. That's the actual like scope and sequence, the competencies, the standards, the progression K twelve of the content and skills. The next part, we look at assessment. We look at what are we doing to get at each competency and, and at the specific standards? That's when we start to look at common assessments and how many assessments are we giving to get at certain skills and certain content pieces?
So you will be involved in that process?
Well, it will be a process that I will be involved in. It's, we have right now, I know at the high school, a certain number, a, a minimum number of assessments that have to be in each competency, and that was set by the teachers.
But you won't do the competencies. I think that's what you're asking. It's up to the teacher to weigh their competence, their, their assignments.
Well, I mean, that actually is something that may come out of grading, that I hope will come out of grading and reporting, is consistency around, you know, if we are truly competency-based in how we are getting from competencies to a hundred-point scale, if we're going to keep that a hybrid system, they should be equal.
One test shouldn't count for sixty percent of their grade?
So those are all things that.
Concern, yeah, my biggest concern is grading transparency, that parents know even at the GMS level what things count for.
Right.
Because I personally had an issue with that in elementary school. And I've only had like two issues. And the rest, I mean, the, the whole experience of both my boys has been fabulous, but these have just been really, it's just unsettling when, like this past year, for one particular class, sixty percent of the grade held in the balance with three weeks left to go.
That's been going on for years.
And.
It has.
I, I don't think that's fair.
And those are practices that we need to look at. We need to educate teachers on the fact that that.
Doesn't help any.
That doesn't help anybody.
It does not.
So I'd love to say that it's going to be done overnight. It's going to take us some time because that is, we're, we're, we have to have those discussions at multiple levels in terms of, there are things that we'll be discussing and looking at at grading. And we've already started at grading and reporting. We've had a lot of the conversation this year on consistency of assignments across grade levels, across teams, across content pieces. You know, are we, do we have com- Uh, you know, are we, do we have common grading practices? And we don't, I'll be honest, we, we don't right now. And that is a huge piece that we have to move, is to have common, even within the building, to have common grading practices. Um, so we're having the discussions.
I just want to make sure they're moving it and aware and people are aware. And I mean, even though it's only happened twice to me, it, you know, it's.
Absolutely.
Just unsettling. And ironically, it happens, of course, on the fourth quarter, you know, when.
Right.
You can't do anything else, you can't do anything about it once the grades close.
But that teacher is the only person teaching that class at the high school. You have teachers teaching the same exact classes with different assignments.
And that's, and that's not uncommon at a high school level. But having, where's the commonality? And then we've started to have those discussions at the high school level. We, when, especially like when we were looking at midterms and finals. I sat with every CF to look at midterms, to look at final exams, to look at the levels of rigor, the, the, uh, uh, how they attach to our competencies and whether or not they actually attach to the competencies. And we, so we've been having those discussions all year. Um, and hopefully, the more we have them, the more people will start to understand what that needs to look like. Um, and as, so as we are moving this work as a district, it's gonna be an easier shift.
How does that work? I'm just curious, cause I'm a curriculum geek. Um, how does that work for the new, new hires coming in? Are they, you know, they know Campbell in particular, because we have so many teachers coming into Campbell. They know Campbell's competency based. I mean, because we're so kind of all over the place and not necessarily consistent across the board, how, how do they come in and kind of find their place and find that consistency with their, their colleagues?
Well, part of that comes from the mentoring and the, the department work that they'll do together. Um, part of it too is that I know like Infinite Campus gets, Andrea sets it up with the competencies. And it's, it's set up to have the competencies having equal weight. And for a lot of teachers, they keep it that way.
Okay.
So.
Interesting.
I mean, that is, in a competency based system, that's ideally what you're, what you're doing.
Everybody is the same.
Right, right, so.
And, and remember this year, the high school's gone to uh, common planning.
Yes.
So.
So we're gonna see, definitely within the cores. That's gonna be a huge piece to help us move the consistency, especially at the high school. Uh, we see a little bit more consistency at the elementary and middle because of the fact that they're, they're doing things as teams or as grade levels.
So one day a week, they're gonna meet as a team? That's what we do at my school.
At the high school.
So they'll, they'll have common planning every day?
Yeah, but that doesn't mean they'll meet together.
It, it, but it gives them the flexibility to meet as needed or there'll be some expectations on that.
Yeah, okay. We just meet once a week. Okay.
Can I go back one, one refresh, it's kind of a ways back to, I was just looking while we were talking to the college attendance analysis. I found out the state's report, and they call it post-secondary.
Yep.
Um, and they, they break it out by four-year, two-year, including trade schools, employment, military and then other. And it lists as unemployed, not, not responded, whatever. I just wonder if we could do that, just to, to show the overall picture. Um, the state doesn't keep it up very well, it's from 2005, so that's the.
But to mimic that.
The, the state's a 54% four-year, 17, two-year, including trade schools, 22% employment, 4% military, 3%.
So another place to look, um, if you look at the, what's the name for it? The school profile, so every high school has a school profile. And typically, they report what percent one each. So we could do that for our peer group also, so that we're comparing. Uh, because the state average is gonna include every school. And, you know, if we're more interested in the peer group.
Makes sense.
Anything else, Mary?
Nope, that was it for me.
Anyone else have anything for Mary? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you head up? That'll bring us to the DA report, who's not here.
So Cory's not able to be here tonight, but if you click the link to that, just, I'll give you some broad strokes to this. Um, financial statements, so just know that Plodzik and Sanderson, who are in the district, have been in, um, and they're doing work. And Cory's seen a lot of follow-up on items that were pending from their visits, so. Um, he's working hard to get that wrapped up. Um, the only findings were relative to student activity fund procedures and things that are easy to tighten up, so.
Cory, like, is finishing his first year, but that comes up. And we've spoken about it, like, every year, I think, I've been on the board, but that's like one of the biggest things that jumps out at them.
The activity funds, yeah.
I'm not quite sure why that still continues to linger.
Uh, so one of the things that I have found is that, um, that, that it's not unique to Litchfield. Um, so I, I will tell you that, uh, I had that when I was a high school principal also. And so there are a lot of practices in the schools that are kind of longstanding practices that the auditors now are paying attention to. I mean, frankly, they found out that financial anomalies are not happening with big accounts. It's the little league mother that you read about in the paper. So now they're paying attention to the student activity funds in, in a sharper way. So I'm not surprised that that came up.
Normally.
You know, I, I will tell you, one of the issues uh, was like on uh, ticket sales per place. You know, so if you're, um, if you're gonna sell a student ticket at one price and an adult ticket at another, and a senior citizen ticket at a third price, right? But then you just, oh, well, you're an adult, so pay me $4 and here's your ticket. And you're a kid and you pay me $2, here's your ticket. But you never keep track and you just say, we raised $640 selling tickets. But there's no breakdown of how you got there. Um, and so it's that sort of thing that they're saying, well, you have to have a breakdown. You have to know how many $2 tickets you sold. Um, because otherwise, I mean, honestly, a person could be saying, oh, they were all $2 tickets. And pocketing money, right? So it's that kind of accounting piece that they're, they're cracking down on to make sure that you're doing right. Now, I don't think for a minute that somebody's walking away with it. Um, but you still should have procedures that make sure that somebody can. And that's what they're pointing out. Um, summer projects, so they've done a ton of work this summer. And there's a list of uh, projects that have been done. It's interesting, cause I was looking at it with them and I said, you didn't list the front doors of CHS.
I know, right?
Which, the fence just came down, the doors are open, the lobby's ready to go. Um, it's not even on this list, but there are a lot of things that have happened across the district. Um, and you can see that he has on here that Dave and Craig are going to look at vehicles in Kingston. So you asked a question about vehicles, so they have somewhere that they're going to take a look at those.
What color is the GMS cafeteria?
So the GMS cafeteria is a really nice cream off white color. And what they did is the paw prints that were on the orange wall.
Yeah.
They sort of like painted up to that. So you have the paw print with a, you know, a very modern orange around it. And then it's, it's, I don't wanna say it's graffiti, like, that's not the right term, but you know, it's just.
Yeah, brush.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so then it stands out and it gives you just enough orange in there to pop without overwhelming.
And that makes you crazy.
Which the old orange had a tendency to do. Yep, it was like Halloween every day.
There's no numbers, so I can say confidently, you know, on budget, all of these, if I ask them?
Say again, that we.
Confidently say we're at or below budget on all these.
We're, we're below, we're, yeah.
Just.
It's been well managed at the task, yep. Athletic transportation, so we, um, we are looking at that. It does seem, we had run in an analysis when, at the time that we were looking at the new bus contract. And our analysis showed that it was gonna be relatively cost neutral. And now that we're running it, we're finding that it's gonna be more expensive to run the buses using the new formula. So, um, so we're still completing that analysis, but I, I know.
I'm very concerned. I've been concerned for weeks.
Yep.
I, I, I guess.
About the sports teams?
So, we'll use an example, the football team went whitewater rafting and their trip, bus trip to Charlemont costs a thousand dollars. According to the formula, last year Jared said that same exact trip would cost $586. Like, when he opened the bill, he had sticker shock. And Robin knows how tight the budget is with sports, that I, I can't, I can't even imagine what we. I was telling Cory, I think I wrote an email saying that sometimes he, it's $40 an hour and then mileage. Some of these wrestling meets can go 12 to 14 hours up in Lebanon. Like, that's a fortune. And I did ask if they could contract out. It, I don't know about our, like, let's say, instead of taking two football buses for a thousand dollars, they got one coach bus for $1,200 and the other gear went underneath. Is that something they could do?
Yeah, so we're, we're looking into that. We're looking into, you know, instead of sending two buses, if you have one for people and then you find an alternative way to get equipment, cause that's football, you know.
Yeah.
Equipment heavy, right? So there are other ways that we can look to trim some of that.
Okay.
Um, so we're looking at all those options. We're, um, we're also talking with other districts that have, um, purchased a small van. And then they're using the van to transport. You still have to have a certified driver on the van, but you can, you can uh, do that in an alternative way, I guess, so.
A lot of districts are looking at that for like golf, basketball, smaller sports.
That all.
Well, it's not like soccer, there are 39 kids on the soccer team now. But it's not like football, they bring stuff, lacrosse, they bring stuff, but there aren't, there are what, like 30, 40 kids and football and all their stuff?
Do they have a trailer? Does football have a trailer?
They do not.
No, they do not.
There are many football teams that have a trailer, so they just stack the equipment in the trailer and.
For the public, like even like a ski mobile trailer to put all the stuff in. Cause they can't even bring their water buffalo, which I keep calling an ox. They can't even bring their ox water buffalo thing that, have you seen it? All the sport, it's like a giant keg of water, sorry. Keg of water with little spurty things out of it. So they don't have to bring their own, they bought that with their own money. And they can't even fit that on the buses. They have to have a parent in a truck bring it up. And it looks funny, cause it looks like a, something hanging off the back of a truck with the little arms flying everywhere. But I just, I know when we approved wrestling years ago, the busing was the hugest part of it. Do you remember that, Brian? Like busing of the $8,000 budget, busing was like $5,600. It's, it just makes me nervous. Does Josh know about this? The new kid, guy, person?
Well, I'm, I'm certain, I'm, I'm certain that um, Jared has brought him up to speed on it. And so again, uh, your request caught me off guard because I said, Cory, we ran all these numbers. And we were aware of this, cause when we saw the change, I'm like, okay, is it beneficial to the bus company? Is it? And so we ran them all and, and determined it was cost neutral. Um, and now it doesn't look cost neutral, so we're trying to figure out.
Are we going to more games? Or is it the formula that the bus company is charging us to sh, to move these children?
Division three, wait till your kids are in sports. You know, they're gone, they have to leave at like 1 o'clock to get to a game at 4:00 in White Mountain, Nova Scotia.
I'm just curious too, like, why does football go like on team bonding thing?
They pay for that themselves. They fund, but it was just, I was there when Jared opened the bill. And you know, you might open a bill every once in a while and get sticker shock, my electric bill. And he's like, oh my God, oh my God. But the team paid, that's why they fundraised for fun stuff like that.
Yeah, but where was that?
Where was what?
How far away was it?
It was in Charlemont, it was two hours away.
I mean, I, I just know from coaching a team, it goes literally from like 500 to $1,000 just need to get over an hour and a half for us, like our buses.
So what if we have to Lebanon or whatever, yeah.
It offsets, I mean, most of your game, and I'm not saying that's the case in this, but I know for our buses, that's exactly what happens in my district. Is once you get over that two-hour limit, it just goes, and it doubles.
I, I don't know anything about.
It could, it could have just been as simple as that maybe and we're dumping the bills on it.
Far away. Well, I, but I think other stuff like, we ran the analysis, we looked at a field trip out of LMS. So it's a trip that we've done forever, nature's classroom, right? So we said, okay, using the old formula and the new one, what's the difference? And it came out pretty cost neutral. We didn't factor in the wrestling team. Um, and it's not even the wrestling team. So like you qualify for New England championships in Providence.
Right.
And you have to leave early in the morning and you're literally there all day long. So now you have a driver sitting, waiting for the meet to be over, to bring you back. And they're just on the clock, ka-ching, ka-ching.
It'd be cheaper to have them come back and get another driver six hours later.
Well, Jared said he always, when he does his budget, he always allows for a couple of teams to go to playoffs. Because that isn't in the budget usually.
Yeah, it is.
Well, it is, yeah, in case, well, they usually do go. Yeah, Litchfield sports.
So there were, so we didn't analyze every single possible trip. And that's one that is used as an example where, um, there is, like Rob said, there's that break-even point. If you're taking a short trip, it's actually advantageous this way. The longer trips are the ones that get you. And wherever that tipping point is, now we're looking at, oh, here's a 12-hour day. And it's like, that's a big tipping point, so.
I'm just curious if you did, yeah, so, all right, surprise.
Sell some more coupon books.
No, I refuse to fundraise for gas. I refuse. I wanna fundraise for fun stuff, for banners and barbecues. We budget for gas. No, we picked that, and water buffalo, that's what they work for.
You should have bought the trailer before the water.
Transportations.
The horse before the car.
Uniforms and refs, that's all the district pay in their mouth guards or whatever else the other sports needs.
Socks.
Socks.
Anything else on the DA report?
And uh, if there are follow-up questions, we can, Cory will be here at the next meeting.
So that'll bring us to all unfinished business. So the first, we have two policies. First is JH, student attendance, absenteeism and truancy. It's the second read.
We made a tweak, Michelle.
I saw it, I liked it.
Liked it, okay. It was your request, I think?
So it was um, a definition.
Of what a half day is. So it's um, I made a comment on the thing.
So, just a question, within the absentee policy, was there another policy that, as far as how many days a student is out before, yeah, they fail out of classes or?
They don't.
They don't want?
I don't think, I've never seen a kid fail out of a class because of absences.
Right, but there's certain, I thought we had a policy as far as after a number of absence.
Of missing a, a missed class, like missing.
I brought it up last, we, we have a seven-day trimester. After seven days.
I don't think we have that.
No, I don't think.
I thought I saw it somewhere.
I've never seen a student fail if they've been out, if kids go on vacation, they come back.
Could somebody argue that if they're, and this is just me reading it as, if they miss a study hall and uh, whatever, if they miss a study hall, they're not missing instructional time? Does that open us up for people arguing that?
Um, are you doing the definition?
I'm just, uh, yeah, I'm just wondering about that. When I, when I read it, I'm assuming we were talking about the highlight was your change, right?
Right.
It says, uh, two hours of instructional time, so the student has a study hall in the morning, skips it every day and comes in, and he's saying, well, that's not instructional time.
I think of instructional time because we use it in the calculation of hours, right?
Right.
No, I'm just saying the kid argues.
No, I, I think we would have to make the point that is part of the instructional day.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of policy JH.
A second.
For the discussion, hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Now our second read of policy EBCB, emergency drills.
Make a motion to approve EBCB.
A second.
For the discussion, hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. So the manifest, you have them over there, Liz, are they signed?
Yes, we are. They need to go to two other people.
No, they.
There's only one signature on it.
That was just that one.
Oh.
That'll bring us to public input again.
It's plain and clear.